Good evening and welcome to the March 7th regular session of Bedford City Council. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Lou Hardy.
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of February 7th, 2021. Excuse me, 2022. Any corrections? Motion for acceptance. Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 7th, 2022. Any corrections to that? Motion by, the title by himself there. Asbury, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. And you have the minutes of the work session of February 22nd, 2022. Corrections to that one. Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Epstein.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd, 2022. Corrections for that. Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Epstein.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. As we enter our old business and new business, seeing there's only five of us here, we don't have a forum to do a suspension of the rules of the three readings, so everything will be first or second readings tonight. I think there is one third reading, so we will get through this rather quickly tonight. Ordinance number 9936-22.
We're going to have a need a motion on table, it's to give it a second reading. Can we get a motion to that effect?
Motion on table by Asbury, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Now, give it a second reading. An ordinance declaring the property and structure located at 312 Marion Drive a nuisance and therefore condemning the property, ordering action, declaring an emergency.
So a motion for second reading, Asbury. Second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. We need to jump back a little bit. We need a motion to excuse Councilman Saunders tonight by Lou Hardy, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. Ordinance number 9951-22.
On third reading, are we gonna have a motion for third reading, Mayor? Yeah, well, I think it's up to you guys. Since it's a third reading, we don't need an emergency, so we need a motion for third reading, right?
Asbury, second by Lou Hardy. Motion, third reading, yes. This one, that is the ordinance that was covering virtual meetings. The state has passed regulations, so we really don't need this ordinance, so my suggestion to defeat it tonight. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
No.
Coche.
No.
Spinks.
No.
Janutus.
None.
Lou Hardy.
No. Resolution number 2577-22.
There's a second reading, so we need a motion for third reading. Resolution authorizing the city manager to apply and accept a grant through Cuyahoga County pursuant to its Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
And we need to put this on second reading, motion for such by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. Ordinance number 9953-22, which will also be a second reading.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hatch for the purchase of overflow monitoring equipment and declaring an emergency.
A motion for second reading by Asbury, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. Ordinance number 9954-22.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with ACOM for services relating to the purchase of the overflow monitoring equipment and declaring an emergency.
And need a motion for a second reading by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes. End of report.
Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Few items, quickly. We are currently, the city of Bedford is currently advertising for our Broadway improvements, specifically throughout the historic district. We're going to be doing substantial repairs to the water line. We're going to be making numerous sewer repairs, as well as electrical upgrades and all of the curb replacements through the historic district. We've talked about this project for some time. We've modified the plans. We're now ready to advertise those, which we are. Our bid opening is scheduled for March 25th, and our plan will be to have a public meeting to talk about more specifics with this project when the time comes. We don't want to have one just yet, because we want to make sure we have all the answers for the public, specifically duration, start date, and a lot of the other specific items. But we are currently advertising for bids, and it's imperative that we get this project done this year, because ODOT has confirmed that they will be coming through afterwards, starting next spring, and they will be resurfacing all of Broadway from corp limit to corp limit. So a lot of improvements through that corridor planned over the next 18 months. As well, in speaking with ODOT, they have sent over some of their initial plans for the Northfield Road Bridge, some substantial improvements taking place there, more so than just sidewalk repairs and fence repairs. There's a long list of items that we're currently reviewing. We shared comments back to ODOT from our engineer, and we're going to continue that dialogue. That project is going to be starting next spring as well. Seems like a long way away, but it really isn't that far away, especially when you're talking about large-scale projects like this. We need to have all these items buttoned up and back to them in time for them to sell this job, so we're working through that item. We're getting to the point where, although today it doesn't look like it, yesterday it did, with the spring breaking, Dominion East Ohio is going to be doing some improvements as well. They do, they are planning in the next month, month and a half, to start a main gas line replacement project in the Archer Road area. As we get more specifics as far as the locations of that, we will share it, but that is most likely going to start in the next couple of months, month and a half probably. But more pressing is there's going to be some emergency line repair taking place in the area of Paul and Charles. They're going to be replacing about 1,000 feet of line, and we expect that to take place in the next couple of weeks. So Dominion will be in that area. We will be present, we'll have inspectors out, and any restoration work will take place when the weather is much nicer and not now, and we will hold that, hold them to it. And they also will be back, for those that still need restoration work from last year in the Washington area, Dominion will be back out again when the weather fully breaks for that. Just wanted to touch on two items regarding the Illuminating Company. The first item is, for anybody that recognizes a helicopter in the area, helicopters circling, possibly lower than normal, this is contracted through the Illuminating Company. They're going to be doing inspections of all of their transmission lines. That is a black and gray helicopter, and that will probably be taking place over the next month. So if you see that, if you see it circling, they do have, they do have permission to do that. It's going to be in the entire Illuminating Company region, so most likely we will see that here in Bedford. And also regarding the Illuminating Company, they did put something out, a press release, we did grab it, we also shared that information online and through various social media outlets, is their Financial Hardship Assistance Program. They made a point to put that out. If anybody is experiencing any challenges regarding their bills and billing, please take a look at that. There's a website you can go to, and there's a 1-800 number you can call. All of that's online, if you can find it, visit our social media platforms, or contact us, and we can share it. They're really working to get that information out there, because the disconnection moratorium has now lifted, so they will be resuming shut-offs come April 15th. So anybody that is having a hardship, if you need help, contact us, we can point you in the right direction, but they did announce that. And lastly, just wanted to acknowledge staff. We were awarded a small recycling grant that we've been going after each and every year, and this will allow us to have multiple shred days. We're going to be doing some, replacing the container for the fire department for burn victims out front. The one thing with the shred days is, this is now, because that's grown so much, there was an event last year where we actually maxed out and filled the truck, they're going to be working to have multiple trucks on site. So the goal is we won't have to turn anyone away. I think one of the events last year, near the end, like the last half hour, we had to turn people away. Our goal is to have multiple trucks. So end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
I think I have no report tonight, just wish Mr. Councilman Saunders a speedy recovery.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Same thing, wishing him a speedy recovery. Another item, too. It's that tax season now, we have people getting ready to file. What we'd like people to do is get their, if they want us to prepare their returns and give them a bill, we highly recommend that you get that in in the month of March, earlier the better, so that we can prepare those bills, kick them back out to you, so that payments can be made on a timely manner before the April 15 deadline. So please get those in. You can also use our online system. Right now, we're still closed, but at this point, I would highly recommend, so you don't have long lines later or and/or filings last minute, so that you can be timely on your payments. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. And we welcome our Assistant Finance Director, Jennifer.
Jennifer's here tonight.
Before we get into council, does that say we are working on the Ward 4 replacement? We will be sending out postcards to everybody in the Ward 4, Ward 4 area. If they're interested, if they send us a letter or a resume. Also, we'll put it online, so maximum people get to see it from that ward, and we'll have some deadline dates in there. It's going to be about four weeks or 30 days after we mail the cards, that all the responses have to be in. And also, just, there'll be a little disclaimer on the bottom. There will be some background checks done on the people that are interested. We call it a minor background check, just look at some solid things. They'll have to sign a waiver, so we can legally do a background check. Certainly will not be as extensive as we do for the police and fire and all that, but it'll just be a minor one, because it's an appointment and not an election. So watch for that card if you're interested in serving. The other thing is, the appointment only runs till November, because by our charter, you have to run in the next general election, and it will be running for only one year to fill out all this term, which will be up following November, so if you're appointed, have to run in November, and if so you choose, then you'll have to run again in the next November, a year later. Just, just so everybody's aware of that, there'll be more information, and we'll get those cards out as soon as possible. And while I'm at the floor, just kind of a public service announcement. I happen to be down at Ganley getting my van serviced, and they were discussing a problem with, during the COVID, they suspended getting your driver's license and your license tags for that year. Well, that, that extension expired a year ago, and they have people coming in there with expired plates and expired licenses. You do now have to renew them, so double-check your wallet and your registration, make sure you are up to date on your registration. The moratorium is off, especially down there, they were having some kind of $1,000 rebate thing for something, and you had to have a current registration, and people were coming in with a two-year-old registration, and they're like, you're not getting the $1,000. But check anyhow, so make sure your driver's license is up to date and your auto registrations. Just thought I'd pass that little tidbit along. We start with Mr. Asbury.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start off with wishing my oldest son, Sean, a happy birthday. He turned 29 today, and tomorrow is actually my wife's birthday, and for some reason, she's 29, too. I'm not sure of the math there, or how that works, but happy birthday, love you guys. Where am I at? I didn't answer, should just close right there. Mr. Malice, last year, I know it was a little too late in the season for a community garage sale, but I've been asked by a couple people, are we going to set together like a weekend where we can get that going?
One of the events that we're talking about while we're working through our calendar, as we get details on how that may work out, we'll share that.
So we, community garage sale day, or weekend, or whatever we choose, we'll figure that out. And did I see, I'm going to put you on the spot, because you're going to check into it tomorrow for me, but there was a sign on one of the buildings downtown, form her, future home of Hudson Wines in Dream. I don't know anything about it, we're going to find out soon, so hopefully another shop opening up downtown, that's a good thing. Bedford Downtown Alliance Chocolate Walk, I briefly mentioned it. We don't have a lot of details at the moment, but it is May 14th, which is a Saturday. Planning on selling a good amount of tickets, and I believe the tickets are going to go around sale right around April 1st, so be watching for that. Good time, nice and warm time, not so chilly as previous years. I'm not sure if you're going to touch on, I'll mention it briefly, and see how, Councilwoman speaks if you want to elaborate on it. The Historical Society is going to have their reverse raffle and silent auction Saturday, April 9th, from 6:00 to 11:00 at La Casa Bella in Oakwood, and reservations are due by 3:31, March 31st. I don't know if you're going to want to elaborate on that a little bit. Mention ahead of time, it's not till next month, but the Service Department is going to have their Computer and Hazardous Waste Roundup, starting on April 18th, and I believe goes for two weeks. We will have more details as we get closer to that event, and that looks like about it. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Just kind of want to comment on what Stan talked about Ward 4 being open. I know when Maryland's a lot of retired, we kind of joke around and told Vicki have some big shoes, which were little shoes for Maryland's law to fill, and something both of them did, they were both my mentors when I came on council, they both were very encouraging, and I'm the last woman standing up here right now. But I don't know if y'all ever noticed, both of those ladies always wore a little pin, a little guardian angel on their lapel. So when Paula passed away, and we talked about it a couple of days before she got real sick, and I kept saying, ah, stop, you're going to be okay, and so at her memorial, her son and her daughter, they beat the guardian angel, so Paula, I'll always wear it for you. Very missed. Getting back with some good news now. Jeff, do you comment on the Bedford Historical Society's reverse raffle? Tickets are on sale now, so you can get them now. Of course, the deadline is by March 31st, it's no, not past that, because of food and stuff being involved. This year's theme is Through the Looking Glass, every time we have it, of course, we haven't been able to have it in the last two years, and this is one of our big fundraisers, too, for the Historical Society. Also, going, happening this Friday, March 11th, from 7:00 to 8:30, is the Bedford Historical Society Speaker Series Celtic Rush, which sees, this band is supposed to be fantastic. It will be in the Community Hall, which is in the basement of the old church. It is a $5 cover charge, and they are, the band is requiring that you do wear a mask, because it's a small area, and so like I said, that's in the old church in the Bedford Commons, so that's what's going on, and then of course, we're having meetings now, Strawberry Festival dates have been set, and the Art and Artisan dates have been set, the second weekend of June for Strawberry Festival. So if you're a vendor and you're interested in either one of those events, and then of course, Art and Artisan Festival is the second weekend in September, so a lot of good stuff going on. So please, in this, like I said, the reverse raffle and this other speaker series, this money is fundraisers for our Bedford Historical Society. While we're talking about volunteer and everything, Tyler, I was going down, said, we're in need of some more volunteers for Meals on Wheels. Stan does it with his wife, and Vic does it by himself, he does two routes at one time. We rarely follow to him with a bunch, and we appreciate that, and then me and my husband do it. But, so it's once, twice, however much you can donate, you usually start at around 11:00 a.m., and then we usually, we try to be done by no later than 12:00, but if you do volunteer, be serious about it, just don't do it and then not show up. Do it for the right reason, because these people depend on those meals. So a lot of us try to, there's a few of us right now, and we're all trying to cover when someone goes on vacation, or someone's sick, and that leaves, you know, especially if they're doing several routes a week, so it's really important, we need volunteers for Meals on Wheels. So if you're interested, please contact them and let them know. And now for some Ward 1 stuff, you were, Mike, you were talking about Dominion, they just finished a big job on Westview. It was, it was the whole, pretty much the whole street up to Meadowgate. So they got that done, even through some of the bad weather, so I know the residents were appreciative of that. Had a water main break on the side of the street that usually doesn't have problems on Thames last week, and it was, it was pretty icy. It was, the whole side was, was pretty slippery, but thanks to our water department, they jumped on it, they give those guys kudos, because they've had a lot of water main breaks and repairs to do this year, had served over in that area, several on Crestwell this past year, and then now with Thames, they had a pretty nasty one, actually two on Groenewell. And so they're still working on those, people need to understand, it takes them a little while for the ground to settle, so those are open holes for a little while. Let's see, I saw Mike, I noticed that they did have a police squad up, there was a lot of speeding up by the school, the high school, in the last couple of weeks, and even noticed got a couple complaints, and I saw myself out in the morning doing my ward check of Willard Buses, cars passing the bus, speeding down Willard, so that would be, that would be about 8:05 in the morning, so I've seen our guys on, on Willard and stuff, and happy St. Patrick's Day, it's coming up next week, so end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Well, Miss Paula, the thing that impressed me about her was she had a good sense of humor, and she would, she could be silly. Can't get the picture out of my mind of you and her up on the gazebo. What do you call it, cutting a rug, or?
Dancing.
Dancing. Hopefully, one of us will remember National Squirrel Day, and we could, if we could share a laugh, I think she'd like it. The last couple days, we had a, we had a taste of spring, so hopefully everyone got up and got a little bit of vitamin D, a lot of information's coming out about vitamin D, and getting some sunshine, and you know, how it, you know, can keep you from getting COVID, or having a serious effect of COVID, so yeah, you want to get out there. And speaking of that, when the snow melts, the town looks so ugly with all the trash and whatnot, and I always thought, the trash is probably the ugliest thing in the city, except for all the street poles and the streetlights and the wires and whatnot, but I think I'm going to take up Sandy's little thing out to us to join, join up and pick up the trash. I did it last spring in my ward, and it stayed, it lasted a long time, right? I thought, you know, some of the trash has been there for a long time, get rid of it, it looks nice, because the only, the thing that really gets more and more trash is when there's trash there, and the only way to keep the trash out, keep people from thinking about throwing trash out, is make it so there's no trash there where they're about to throw it. And in order for that to happen, I got to tell you, I can't do along Solon Road anymore, I'm too old. There are things on Solon Road there that, I mean, they're pieces of cars, I couldn't put them in a trash bag, and it's just, it's just too much. Then I heard that that spell was actually belonged to the city, and the city owned that, so it'd be helpful if the city would do the, pick up the trash along Solon Road there from Archer to Wellman, that would really be handy, and I think that, you know, probably if Don was here, he would tell us that we're going to get a lot more snow, everybody, it's not spring yet, and maybe, maybe everyone would think about Earth Day coming up here in April as, as a day that, you know, we could all get out and maybe pick up a little trash, and you know, be community-minded about it, so I think that'd be a good idea. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy. Just got a couple things. Mike, are we, we doing chipper service starting April again?
Yeah, not April, yes. First full week, first full week.
Right, that's coming up. Also, that light at Justin and Paul Street went out again, they just replaced it, and I don't know why it's not working, but I just got a call today. There's a few lights around the neighborhood, I know, didn't we have PD go around and mark any of these down?
Yeah, they're marked, and we turn them in. We do it every spring and fall, and we turn that into the Illuminating
We do it every spring and fall, and we turn that into the Illuminating Company, and if you see the caution tape around some of the lights that are out, that's to help them identify them, and then they're supposed to remove those when finished, but I'll, I'll check this. They'll be back out in the spring, too, our police department.
Got a couple still out, I don't know when they're coming out to fix them, but I figured because of the weather, they're not going to come out till maybe now, things have changed, and hopefully. I got a little story about Paula that I didn't tell last council meeting. What, I think it was about two weeks before, we stood up there and did the Pledge of the Legion, and I reached in my pocket, and it's like, what is this in my pocket? It's two Bitah Honeys. Anybody that knows Paula, she gave me those two Bitah Honeys, and that's probably the first time I wore those slacks in about two months, and it's like, that Bitah Honey's been in there since probably November, and I thought of her right then, I'm going, you know, and then, of course, she passed away after that, I never got a chance to tell her that, but, so I eat the candy, of course, and so, but she always took care of me for my candy, so Paula, I'm going to find somebody else to give me my candy. End of report.
Thank you.
Let's move along with our new business, ordinance number 9955-22.
An ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent water bills in the city of Ohio and declaring an, city of Bedford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
And again, that'll have to be on first reading, motion for such by Asbury, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9956-22.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of tasers for the police department, declaring an emergency.
And again, that will also be first reading, and I have a motion for such by Janutus, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
And, oh, it's quick, only two items there. Comes to hearing of citizens, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Jeff, paper 134, Airman. I'm going to keep asking this, I was wondering if there's been any action on looking into the fireworks situation?
Yes, it's on our topic for next meeting.
Okay. Also, Mike, is, is it the proposal that they're going to be working on Broadway and Northfield at the same time?
Not necessarily, no. We don't, that's, that's too far out. Most likely, Northfield Road Bridge will be afterwards, but I don't have an exact timeline yet. I know the sale of the bids will be around the same time, or the sale of the job, but I don't know the specifics. Obviously, that'll be something that we bring into question, because obviously, impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, Diane.
You, you take first. I'm Diane Estes, out of 685 Archer Road, and I just wanted to get up here and thank Sandy and reiterate what she had to say about Meals on Wheels. This is a program in Bedford, you would not believe, the people who don't have food. They're, they're getting one meal a day from us, and they don't, a lot of them have no food in their refrigerators, other than that one meal. We need help desperately. We've got people like Sandy and a number of other volunteers that are going out three and four days a week to make deliveries, because we don't have enough people to deliver. I want to ask that, one thing she didn't do was, as long as this is going out, the phone number to call if you want to volunteer is 440-439-0302.
Say it again slowly.
And this lady will get you set up, and it'll, it'll be, you'll be working. But it's only one day a week, and it's only an hour?
An hour and a half.
A day. So, I mean, you know, people tell me, I don't have time, and I just look at them and laugh, because how could you not have time? Everybody can spare an hour. I mean, I realize if you're working full-time all day, that's different, but, you know, because it is at noon, but it's really something we need to concentrate on in this city, so promote it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very rewarding, too.
And it's not a job.
It's not a job.
It's not a job.
It's volunteer.
Scott Martin, 635 West Runway. I don't know what the procedure is, but at the corner of Edgewood and Grace, there's that big brick wall sitting next to the railroad tracks, it's got shrubberies there about six and a half foot tall. It's impeding, looking up towards Broadway, there's many traffic's coming down across the tracks. Seen people sticking their front bumpers out in Gray Street trying to get out of the intersection. So if there's an avenue, we can knock on that guy's door and say, hey, can you open up the line of sight here or something? Pretty good, they try to not get your bumper knocked off there.
You already ruled it down.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say when we are going to put together the committee for the...
Charter review.
Charter review. I mean, the longer it sits...
No, no, I'm glad you brought it up, I forgot to, but we are doing that like soon, as in this week.
Because those have to be reviewed and put to...
Yes, we made our final decisions tonight, and we'll get together with the clerk in the morning to get notifications to those people that are, that have been selected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reminding. Anyone else?
Just a reminder, the Rotary's River burnout this year will be July 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. That goes along with the other activities that we have out of the square, just a reminder for that, for this year, where we will have it later in the year, July 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
Thank you. There's no one else? Motion for a German, by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Asbury?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming and for watching.